The team worked really, really hard to put together this budget in a manner that is comprehensible, yet supportive of our district's needs. So with that being said, everybody's aware of our belief statements and our budget is deeply rooted and grounded in these belief statements, along with our vision and our mission, our core values of exploring, empowering, and achieving. And the guiding budget principles are about equity and sustainability in education. As you know, your board goals are really important to the district around the four priorities of academics, culture, climate, fiscal operations, and talent. This budget supports the growth, development, and sustainability of all four of those areas that are also directly tied to our belief statements, our mission, our vision, and of course, our vision of the East Haven Public Schools graduate. A responsible citizen, resourceful problem solver, goal-directed and resilient individual, powerful and effective communicator, and an informed thinker. We've been working really, really hard to make these attributes and skills an embedded, ongoing, natural process of the learning for our students and the teaching of our students in our district. And the budget encapsulates all of these skills and attributes. So we have some budget goals. There's five of them. The first is student-centered investments. We really wanted to make sure that this budget reflects equitable access to instruction, resources, and educational opportunities. In terms of operational efficiency, we wanted to make sure that the funds maximize impact and reduce redundancies. Future-ready pathways, expansion of CTE, STEM, and workforce development programs. Talent is huge. You're going to see that 95% of our budget is focused around talent, recruitment, retention, and developing of these high-quality educators, and also the health and wellness of these individuals. And then finally, sustainability for building partnerships for long-term fiscal health. I'm going to go through a little bit of data, but I know that I share data with the board frequently in the Board of Ed updates and also through presentations at the Board of Ed level. So I'm going to try to go through the data quickly so we can focus and manage our time around the actual proposed budget. But our current enrollment for 2024-25 is just over 3,000 students, 3,025 students. This includes all of our students in grades pre-K through 12, 51 outplaced students for which we pay tuitions, and 129 students at the Voag and Technical Schools. This number does not include the 309 Magnet School students that attend New Haven Magnets. However, we are still fiscally responsible for these students and any support services, speech, special education services, PTO, any related service of these students, and are billed for that appropriately. Some additional data, we're down the number of homeschoolers in town from 44 last year down to 23. And we have a little bit of an increase of the number of students attending private, independent, and parochial schools. We're just under 200 out of 195 students. Our projected enrollment, it fluctuates anywhere between 25 and 35 students, so we're projecting an enrollment of about 3,056. But given the transient rates and some of the data I shared with the board about the number of school moves, that number is becoming more unpredictable. Here's a little glance. I know you've seen these numbers before, so this is just a quick review. But if you look at the trend from 2021, '22 through 2023, '24, you can see that our Hispanic and Latino population has increased from 32% to 42%. That's a 10% swing in four years. And our white population has decreased just about 10% over the four years. So we're becoming more diverse. You're going to see some multilingual learner data coming up in a few slides that will also reflect these percentages. So in this current school year, 2024-25, we're at 15% multilingual learners. But take a look at the breakdown by school. Tuttle School almost has 1/3 of its population identified as multilingual learners, speaking a second language, many of whom come as complete non-English speakers. Farrarrah's right behind them with 25%, that's 1 out of 4 students. Mamawgwin at 20%, 1 out of 5. The middle school drops to 16, Deer Run to 14, the high school at 11, and the academy at 6%. This is a huge shift, and you'll see some of our budget requests reflect the need for more support personnel to help develop our second-language learners. Another one, big, huge impact on budget is students with disabilities. Current year, 2024-25, we are at 19%. That's higher than the state average. Deer Run has 36% of their students designated as students with disabilities, mostly because that's where our Little C-Star pre-K program is housed. Mamawgwin's not too far behind, 20%. The middle school, 20%. Tuttle at 19, the academy at 18, high school at 17, and Farrarrah at 15. This is a growing number with more significant needs year over year. And you can see the trend. I put in a little bit of a comparison to the state and a trend over the last four years. So you can see the increase slowly growing. In terms of our special education students, I'm sharing a little bit of the breakdown by percentage by primary disability. The highest percentage are students with autism, just under 20%, with emotional disturbance just under 7%, intellectual disability hovering around 2.5%, learning disability's around 40%, other disabilities around 8.5%, and other health impairment at 14.3%. Speech and language is at 8.3%. I believe that that number does not include preschool. The data was pulled from the ed site, the public website, and those numbers do not include preschool students. So that is just contained K through 12. I wanted to do a comparison with the state and the district around total special education expenditures for students with disabilities by category. You can see we're pretty proportionate to the state relative to teacher salaries, employee benefits, some instructional aid salaries. Where we fall off a little bit is special ed tuition. We're slightly higher than the state. And that is also reflective of a huge decrease in the number of students that are outplaced. We dropped from 74 to 51. However, the rise in costs and percentage increase of these tuition placements doesn't necessarily save dollars, even though we've reduced the number of students by more than By law, we're required to have time with non-disabled peers. We've been working really, really hard at that in district, and Bob and his office have come up with some creative and innovative strategies. Currently, we're just over 65% for students with disabilities who spend just about 80% to 100% of their time with non-disabled peers. It becomes increasingly more difficult when you have highly specialized programs, and so we look for creative ways to integrate students into more inclusive environments through specials and recess and lunch and morning circle and the content areas where they need fewer supports. As you know, our chronic absenteeism rate has decreased tremendously. We've put a lot of time and effort under the leadership of Julie Church when she was our Family Engagement Coordinator to decrease that number last year to 15.2. At the end of December, we were just over 15%, so we're still trending in the same direction. January is a longer month with more membership days, so we're anticipating that number to drop hopefully for the month of January, provided that RSV and walking pneumonia doesn't take I do know the board has seen and knows the data around school moves, but I did include that because I am going to make a point of sharing that data explicitly with the Board of Finance and the Town Council so they understand the challenges and that truly only 40% of our students reside with us all the way from kindergarten through graduation. Percent eligible for free and reduced lunch meals. The data at the top with the bar graph with the district compared to the state comes from the direct certification at the state level. We no longer collect forms, but I wanted to break it down by school. Mamawgwin automatically direct certified has 70% of their students with free or reduced lunch. Tuttle's right behind with 64%. The middle school and Farrarrah are tied at 63, Deer Run at 54, the high school at 53, and the academy just under 50%. It's growing, it's increasing, and I think, you know, the demographic in terms of being economically disadvantaged presents many challenges, but we feel fortunate enough that our district participates in the community eligibility provision so all of our students receive free breakfast and free lunch. Here's just a little snapshot of some college and career readiness course-taking with a target of 75 per the State Accountability Index. We have 96.7% of our students taking college and career readiness courses. That's up from 95% the year before. We've done a great job creating those pathways, linking them to dual enrollment credit, much of which the board has heard about over the past several years, and that just continues to expand and grow. Our on-track-to-high-school-graduation number for last year was 86.9%. Our target is 94%. We're continuing to have those on-track grade-nine meetings, keeping kids focused and engaged on what is necessary to earn the minimum of five or six credits to be able to move on to the 10th-grade year. Here's a little staffing snapshot. We're currently at 583 total staff. Non-certified, 272; certified, 311. We broke it out through specific categories and bargaining units so you can see it further detailed. But take a look at the two pie charts by assigned category. It's a comparison between the district and state for the categories of staffing in district. And you can see we're super proportionate to the state, district administrators, student support services, library media, general ed teachers. So we're not askew in any one particular category or another. Our current budget will call for some additional staffing, but the data you see here will support that. So we're making some key investments with this budget. One is instructional stability, really making sure that we have equitable resources and curriculum for literacy, math interventions, and our CTE pathways. The budget seeks to stabilize that. Medical is going to, RJ is going to tell you a pretty significant story around medical this evening. We're really looking for adequate funding to support the health and wellness of our faculty and staff. We are a people profession. What happens here every day does not happen without the faculty and staff. Their health and their wellness matters, and we need to be properly funded for their health and their wellness. Technology, looking at the lease, replacing hardware and improving network infrastructure on a cyclical manner to get back into that yearly refresh, because when we got the COVID dollars, if you remember, we just wiped everything and created everything new. That will present to be problematic in a few years as our technology ages, so you'll see increases in technology to support the continuous replenishment of the hardware. And finally, special ed. Mental health and support services for students inclusive of behavior, social work, bilingual and speech, and funding for rising tuition costs while being responsible about bringing students back and programming accordingly for them. So those are what we're looking for in our budget, our key investments we seek to make. I'm going to turn it over to RJ, who's going to walk you through some of the budget dollars, and we're going to start with salaries.
So you're going to see as we walk through tonight, there's going to be three main drivers that we're going to consider. The three drivers we're going to speak on tonight are not going to be different than we've spoken on in the last few years. There are salaries, there are special education, and there are medical costs. I wanted to take a little deeper dive into each to prove the true understanding of where they're coming from and the importance of them to the overall picture. So we'll start with salaries. Same format as last year, our contractual salaries are $1.9 million, and you'll see the individual breakout by larger unit. Our teachers, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, going down to our non-contractual salaries. Those include, it shows a zero, it's because of rounding, but it's a very small change, but that includes our stipends, our overtime for maintenance, and our substitutes that are not categorized in a certified area. But that 1.9 is a contractual obligation that we have through contracts. It is not anything that we can sway away from. These are contracts that we've negotiated in good faith, and they're also contracts that we've negotiated fairly to a percentage that is both advantageous to our employees and ourselves to be fiscally responsible. The position changes of $240,000, the story for that kind of circles back to last year. When we were presented with our budget allocation for last year, we had to make some tough decisions on cutting back some FTEs, and we did so through attrition. When people retired or we were able to look at case and course loads, we were able to shift some employees, make some of our specials travel a bit, look at number of students in classes and kind of reduce the number of staffing that we had at certain levels. In doing so, we did it in a way where we took a shot to see, was it beneficial? How far we pushed back? Were we able to sustain that? Most areas we were, and some we've noticed that we need to add back a little bit to give some more supports to our students. Primarily, you'll see in this area, it's social workers, a special education teacher, and bilingual help at those schools. So in doing what we did last year, the exercise proved to be very beneficial. We gained a lot of knowledge from it, but in doing so, we also identified some areas where we did cut back and pull back a little bit, where we need to add some more supports there. So you're going to see those teachers that are added here are built into a total salary increase this year of $2.1 million. Good? The next large driver is our special education, specifically our outsourcing and tuition and fees. So this table that we're looking at now, we went back from 2024, 2025, and we're showing our budget for '26. There is our tuition cost in '24 where we outplaced 74 students. The transportation for those 74 students was $1.8 million. The excess cost we received from the state of Connecticut was $2.3, and then that left our general fund with an impact of 6, just shy of $6.3 million. The allocation was received last year. We looked hard at bringing some students back, like Erica had mentioned. Some proved to be beneficial. Some proved to cause us some chaos here, where we needed to make some changes based on bringing a student with special needs back to be able to sustain the level of education that those students needed to be in district. So $51 million dropped our tuition to $6 million. The transportation dropped to just under $6.1.7. Excess cost is $2.2 million, which is our general fund impact of $5.4 million. This is our true projection of where we tend to be right now. If you go over two columns, the 2025 budget, because we were flat-funded and unable to increase, is what our budget is there, and this is where we're basically finding the shortfall of that $1.7 million. So we had a net of $5.4 million of what we expect to be at this year. Our budget has an expected outcome of $4 million, and this for two main reasons. One of them, and you'll see a red box around the 2.2 for excess cost. This has become a very fluid number from the state of Connecticut. At the beginning of the year, we received guidance on what will be funded for excess costs when it's submitted, and then last week, we just received some notification that it was reduced by 40% of what our allocation was. So what we received from the state was, based on what we submitted, if the state fully funded excess costs, we would receive an excess cost impact of $3.4 million. With the 40% reduction, we are now going to receive $2.2 million, which is an impact of $1.2 million. And we've received this January 6th, so it's a week ago. So this impact is going to, you'll see the 1.6 is what we budgeted for to be conservative, but it's still shy of what we're going to, the half a million dollars that we're actually going to get. So the fluid notion at the state level provides a lot of uncertainty around the special ed costs here. And I feel like, you know, when it comes to this, we're kind of burning our candle on both ends. Excess cost from the state is going down, so the money we're receiving in grant funding is going down, but the private schools are not stopping their increases in tuition rates. We just received ACE's letter for next year. They are going up 4.5% next year. That is one of probably seven or eight outplacement schools that we have. So the impact comes, falls back on our operational funding, because the state is providing less, the schools are charging more, and we're in the middle trying to balance and trying to find the happy medium to make the financial piece work for the students. So that is why you'll see the 1.7 increase is literally to maintain those 51 students at the 4.5% average increase of where we are now, taking into consideration the volatility of excess cost next year at the state level. Any questions on that? That's a big piece. No? Okay. You guys are a good audience. The third large factor is medical insurance, and I think everybody here is expecting what I'm going to say, but to go over our historic medical claims, this bar graph here is showing 2024, our actual claims were $8.7 million. And I can confidently say, you can tell by the bar graph, the last four or five years prior to that was around that average. We're anywhere from $8.6 to $9 million. Our estimated claims for 2025, which is this current fiscal year, is estimated to come in at $10.3 million, which is 1.6 higher than where we ended last year. Our consultant, Lockton, they were here for their first initial meeting a month ago. We have three meetings with them. There's one next week, and there's one in April. And based on experience throughout this current year, they adjust their factors for our current rates. They are projecting our claims next year now, really early in the game, without much experience for 2025 when they came here, to be $10.4 million. So if you were to take a five-year average, including their projection of $10.4, our claims for the '25, '26 year would be $9.5 million gross. So that'd be our starting point for our medical claims. Our next slide, excuse me.
I just want to comment that RJ and Joe worked really hard on this chart, and their predictions outside of the guidance we get from the consultants were very, very, very close. The way and the method for which they calculated this, we're having an unhealthy year. It happens every five or six years. This is our year, and so just know, currently, we are trending way over in medical.
Question. So PA and D were way under 150,000, but we knew we were graduating for this year. Where do we stand in the health front?
Zero. Zero.
We're over.
The fund has no money, yes, no money.
No money.
Correct. There's a slide for that coming soon.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get ahead. But I just want to say, like, you know, it's not a lack of projection or a flaw in their formula, it's just the cyclical nature of health insurance and the health of an organization.
Have you charged the money to cover our budget?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. You're stealing my thunder.
[laughing]
Soon come. So taking that 9.5 estimated claims, the next tab is going to show you that if you back away our employee contributions and any contributions we get from TRB and we charge the grants, we need to absorb $6.6 million in our operational funds to cover the projected claims of $9.5 million. So that alone is a $2 million increase to our medical line. So you got the main three drivers, you're averaging around 2 to 2.5 per driver, this being our largest fluctuation. So I want to show you some prior medical, prior years' medical projections. Not so much projections, but proposals that we had prepared and presented in the last three budget cycles, which would have eased our way into reducing the medical fund responsibly, having it last, have some longevity to it, and decrease the immediate need for operational You can see here our estimated claims, like I had mentioned, 9.1 to 8.7 to 9, all on the right average. Our contributions from employees, which is contractual, creeped up from 1.9 to 2.22 as expected. Grant absorption stayed constant in '22, '23. '24, it dropped down. That's when we saw a significant drop in all our entitlement grants. And then you can see down at the bottom was our proposed split on how we proposed to absorb that impact to our budget, and it was kind of splitting it percentage-wise to ease our way into a responsible ask at those years. So based on that not happening is where we are today. But to Erica's point, I just wanted to prove that we have a good handle on it. We feel our estimates are accurate and our projections are coming to fruition. And there's a slide coming next where I kind of encapsulate that all together for you to see. So our next slide is basically our budget drivers, right? And I think the important things to point out here, the top half is our contractuals, which is 95% of our budget, which makes up $53.7 million, right? Which is 95% of our budget. The non-contractuals, which is 5%, makes up $2.6 million. And in looking at those deltas, the large factors are what we just spoke of: salaries, benefits, special education, and the tech leases are what Erica had mentioned, because it is basically the cyclical path that we've been going on when we mention leases, and you guys have graciously approved them. Instead of coming to the board every five or six years with a $1 million ask for Chromebooks, we can lease them on a yearly cycle where it's minimal impact to the budget and it's predictable. Predictable is what's most important here, because we need to know what we're going to spend annually so we can properly prepare. I feel our department has done that in creating a predictable budget with responsible contracts where we can say, you know, we can consistently ask for, if we were to consistently ask and get a smaller percentage, we could make it work. Looking at the bottom piece of that non-contractual, I would argue, although there's not a contract tied to it, I would argue that many of those are not something we would want to disassociate with a contractual, like a textbook, or our reserve for retirements, or repairs and maintenance. That's what keeps our buildings looking in the great shape that they are. So although they're not tied to a union labor contract, I don't necessarily feel it is something that we should push to the back burner and say we have room to cut much. To the cutting point, you can see we did reduce that non-contractual piece by 3% again this year, by $90,000. So what we can control, we are controlling and showing decreases when our inflation rate is upwards of 10%, and we are able to shave this down rather than rate is upwards of ten percent, and we are able to shave this down rather than going up. But I think it's just important to know that ninety-five percent of this budget is, again, providing what we need to students, staff by contractual language. And this goes from teacher contracts, this includes our busing contract, this includes our leases, um, it includes our management building, our building management for our night cleaning at schools. There is a lot that goes into the contractual piece beyond salaries. So I just want, I, I think it's important to see it on what we're tied to and what we have flexibility with. So based on those three factors, you're, the budget that's in your binder tonight is a total request of fifty-nine, just shy of fifty-nine point three million dollars. Is a fourteen point one percent increase, just shy of seven million at six point nine. Is a very large number.
Two million dollars for health insurance benefits?
It's those three factors. If you were to add up the factors of what I just spoke of, it's like six point seven of the six point nine.
Yeah.
Um, but before I get to the next slide, you have it in your binder. If there's, when you're going through your binder, note that a lot of the position changes that are gonna, you're gonna see, some may have fluctuations at each level, but based on last year's budget, we did a lot of shifting of moving te, teachers to grants and out of grants based on years. So it may look like one position was never filled, only because it was in a grant last year and it came to the operating bu, budget this year. So if you have any questions with that, please reach out, we have an expl, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So total request fifty-nine million, two fifty-eight, seven thirty-seven.
Yeah.
But that doesn't all come from the town, correct?
So I believe, yes. So of that, the ECS entitlement here for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, is twenty million five thousand nine fifty-seven, which is flat from last year.
Okay.
So of that fifty-nine, twenty comes from the state through ECS, which is education cost share.
But there's no increase in that educational cost share.
Yeah. So we're getting twenty this year, so we'll, I mean, really what we're asking for the town is like, what, almost forty?
Thirty-nine, two fifty-eight, correct.
Okay.
So with that, the last slide is just a six-year budget trend. And to your point, Michelle, um, I wanted to show this because the first line is showing our adopted general fund by budget, and this is what our allocation was from the town. The second line is expenditures paid from other funds. Primarily, those other funds are our medical reserve, our rentals account, and our Medicaid grant that is used to offset special education costs. So if you total all that up, that is what, where all the medical reserve money went to cover the medical costs because we weren't properly by budgeted for in years past. That account is now zero. Our rentals account that we used to replenish the aud, auditoriums was brought down to, were around ten thousand dollars before this next season. So I think it's important to see that the projection that we, this is twofold. I wanted to, I wanted to give you confidence that we know what we're doing on our end, so you're comfortable with what we're presenting to, to you. But if we were to go with the methods that we had prescribed in prior years and were given a minimal three percent per year consistently, which equates to one point five to one point seven million dollars, we would fall in line this year, our number would be around fifty-five point six million compared to the fifty-six point two we would need.
You explained this during the last budget presentation to the town, did you not?
Yeah. So I, I just wanted to put it out there that over the six years, we are, we are, we are growing at a consistent rate, which is not crazy. It's just the volatility of how we're receiving the funds.
Because we're consistently underfunded.
Correct. So the reason why we're, we're sitting at a six point nine ask is the buildup and depletion of those reserve funds. We were able to survive because we had the medical reserve. The medical reserve is gone as of last year. So this fiscal year, those ten point three million dollars, we are, it's for the reason why we had a budget freeze in October, we are still in a budget freeze for this current year, trying to close that gap, um, for this current year. But all of that in perspective was put into the preparation of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget in front of you tonight.
It's a very transparent ask. Some may say it's irresponsible, but it would be irresponsible of us not to ask for it.
Correct.
It's also irresponsible not to appropriately fund a budget, if you ask me, so, I don't know.
Very transparent ask, but very straightforward.
And it's going to be brought to the year before, and that will come, it shouldn't be a surprise.
No. Like repeatedly, you propose. Next slide?
Next slide's, yeah. So the next slide is just basically a proposed budget based on the state prescribed accounting I wanted to include it, just if you guys were familiar with it, I wanted to compare it to last year, the way it was. But again, you're, you're gonna see our one hundred line, our salaries, the two, the two million change. Employee benefits is a two million dollar change. And other purchase services, which primarily is our special education, is a two point four million dollar change. Those three drivers are consistently what we address for the last three, four years, and they're just, we're, we're percolating to the top now. That, it's, it's really the reality. It's those three lines. And I think this past year, we did a good job of scaling back the most we could. Like I said, we brought a reduction from seventy-one to fifty-four outplace students, which has been a challenge. Bob's office has done a great job in identifying and still identifying students to bring back for next year, some of which comes with an on-cost, right? To, to, to bring a student back to save a hundred, we may need to adapt the bathroom that costs us twenty-five thousand dollars. So there's, there's some on-cost, there's some staffing that we've brought in. You know, one of the lines, you're gonna, you see like a fifteen percent jump in salaries because we hired an internal BCBA rather than outsourcing a BCBA. So you're seeing a, a jump, but long, long-term, it's a savings for us, and it's the right thing to do rather than continue to outsource where we're in, we're in control. So some of it is, like, like I said, when you go through the binder, some of these jumps may seem drastic, but it's for reasons such as you'll see a savings in one bucket, but you gotta o, have an on-cost in the first year in another area.
And we did also a lot of transferring and movement of staff through attrition with the reduction of the twenty-one FTEs. So some of the plus and minuses might be because a staff member moved out of one school to another school and we never, and we didn't fill that, that vacancy. So just be aware of that when you're going through the budget. Doesn't necessarily mean that the position doesn't exist. It might have been relocated or shared or moved funding source.
And then our last slide here is grant funding. Again, this is basically going back to the volatility at the state law level. We are seeing a slight decline every year in grant funding. So again, prices are going up, grant funding is either staying stable or de, decreasing the burden, comes back to us to provide the same level of service. In an inflation market the way it is, it becomes more and more challenging to do so, and we're picking and choosing wisely. But another important factor here is the Overbrook program. You will see, um, the growth and potential decline of funding because of the timing at the grant level. Any shortfall at the Overbrook level falls back on our operational funds. So there, although it's a promising program, it's always a volatile risk for us. Like if the state were to take away a piece of the school readiness grant, it's on the operational budget to maintain and fill that hole to make sure it, it performs at the same level it always has. So although Overbrook, that grant bucket does not pertain to the budget presented in front of you tonight, it's there to say that it may, because it holds a volatile risk with that grant funding and how it could im, impact either the, this year or in, in the future.
And they're in a transition at the Office of Early Childhood, moving from school readiness to early start Connecticut. And already, the renewal of the, what were the old school readiness funds that are now called early start Connecticut funds, um, were reduced. So, um, you know, that, that transition did already result in, in a reduction for July one.
And, you know, we've addressed some of these, but just so you know, there's a rising cost in transportation. We have a great transportation provider where we, we were able to negotiate a very strong contract. We're coming to tonight to ask for permission to start negotiations for an extension with them. But a key factor in that contract was, we have a built-in, there's no escalator based on fuel price. Many other neighboring towns have it capped at a certain level, and once the diesel hits a certain price, you pay your contractual price plus the difference. Our contract does not have that, so yes, we have a three point seven five percent increase, but it is all encompassing, and it kind of protects us from the economy and the inflations around fuel. Our utilities, I mean, utilities could be anywhere from twelve to twenty percent with the UI. We are doing the solar project at schools, hoping that's going to be at, to completion next school year, so we do have one more year of electricity to go through. And then it's just staffing, like, we are nothing without our staff, right? We are only as good as our teachers can teach and our support services can provide support. What they need is to be properly paid and feel appreciated when they walk in the door. So that's what this budget does. We need to ensure that we are providing what they need to come here every day, happy, ready to learn and teach our kids. Funding for the significant repairs and maintenance is not budgeted for here. This repair and maintenance is ten to fifteen thousand dollars per building for water fountain repairs, toilet repairs, small repairs that easily add up for supplies, but if something major were to happen, we'd have to look at something and try to find a way to bridge that gap. So when you're looking at those lines, like custodial supplies, yes, it's a hundred and twenty thousand, it's split over eight schools. That's like, less than twenty thousand per school for custodial supplies for the year, which is the supplies our custodians need to do the cleaning that they have to do. And then basically what we talked about, the grant funding related to special ed, it's a, it's an ongoing challenge that we continue to navigate. Hopefully, it turns around for us eventually, but at the current time, it's providing more challenges than it is rewards.
And so basically, we're looking for a specific return on our investment here, which is improved outcomes for kids, right? Ha, higher graduation rates, improved academic achievement levels, with our, our two assistant superintendents leading the way, and appropriately funding our staff and their health and wellness. We can do that. Workforce development, you know, preparing students for high-demand industry jobs, and of course, all of those embedded skills and attributes as part of the vision of the graduate. Staff, we talked about it over and over, to attract, retain, and develop skilled educators that are really dedicated to fostering student success. And finally, community impact, right? Stronger partnerships and a large sense of community pride. And that's what we're looking for in terms of our return on investment with this particular proposed budget. So as we usually do, we'll send out a link to our Google survey where you can ask questions as you're going through, uh, your budget. If you need clarity on something, or you want backup detail, all you have to do is fill out that survey, let us know, and we'll come back to you at the next meeting, prepare to answer those questions, provide the detail and/or clarity you need. And the interim, you're always welcome to reach out to us and let us know, um, if you need something immediate.
For its, for, yeah, for a timeline perspective, we need to provide this to the town by February first. So at the next board meeting, which I believe is the twenty-eighth, right? We would need to approve the proposed budget so we can prepare it here to send to Town Hall. So I don't know if, if worthy, you can prepare a meeting next week if you feel necessary, or we can field questions the way we normally would for that next meeting.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to do a special meeting.
Yeah.
We don't want to get stuck on the twenty-eighth and not have a budget approved to the town for February first.
Correct.
Did you want a budget workshop in between?
No, just a special meeting.
Special meeting?
Yeah, I think so. Well, no, no, we don't need to do a meeting, because we're not taking any action, we're not doing it, it's still just gonna be kind of problem solving.
Yeah.
Correct.
So workshop.
Okay.
I would, I would say if we, if there are any suggestions for possible scenarios, if you can get those to me a little sooner than that meeting, so we can kind of run some preliminary figures on, to bring back to you, rather than just ask the question then and not be able to, if, if there's anything more than generic questions.
Yeah.
So, that's all.
Yeah, I think a special meeting would only be if, like, we didn't approve it on the twenty-eighth and then we had a, yeah, so.
To take action. So a workshop next week, just let us know the date.
Anybody have any restrictions or availability issues that they know of now?
For next week?
Yeah.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday? Yeah, Tuesday?
Tuesday? Tuesday's good.
No, today's the fourteenth. It's the twenty-first.
Actually, twenty-first is here, we, they, uh...
Jack's available.
Let's do it.
Is everybody else good for the twenty-first?
I'm good. Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get that communication out and the workshop posted.
Any questions before we break?
I have a quick question, RJ.
Yeah?
When was the last time we increased the cost for rentals, considering the high cost of utilities?
It's been, it's been a few years.
I think that's something that really needs to get looked at. Manpower has increased, the cost of utilities has increased.
So the, the piece of rentals that has not increased is the overall rental fee for the space. All of the manpower rates have increased with the con, with the contractuals.
I think that's something you should really look at.
Are we, do we know what, um, surrounding venues are charging?
North Branford is no longer offering their facility for rentals.
Okay.
So we've, we've obtained a lot of theirs. We are, we are getting into the season, so the, the rate would probably be for July one forward.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, we can, we can, I can get a price list out to everybody.
Maybe see what North Haven charge is, or...
Yep. There's not many local, actually.
I mean, our facility is pretty nice, so.
Correct.
And I know a lot of sporting events, they come here because...
Yeah, and we've, we revamped the middle school, so we're starting to get a lot of traction there, where some people are starting to rent there rather than here for the cost. So I think that's picking up as well. So yeah, but I can get the rates out there, everybody, we can discuss that.
Yeah, we don't want to, like, be over anyone because we want them to come to us.
No, exactly.
But just, just so you know, Mary, the rental money is not factored into this at, at all. That'd be above and beyond.
Yeah, I know, but it, we, it's a reserve.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll look forward to your questions, comments, feedback, and any other budget detail you may need. Thank you.
All right, fellow board members, we have a photo to take. Good evening. I'd like to open this evening's meeting with the pledge of the grounds. Okay. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So report this evening, again, I just hope everybody, their New Year's off to a great start. So happy New Year. I want to thank you in advance for the extra time you're going to be putting in for our budget preparation. I'm sure everyone needs a little time to absorb what we heard this evening. And that's all I got. I'll see all yours next Tuesday. I don't believe we have correspondence, do we?
Would you like me to take attendance?
Yeah, I say you missed attendance.
Did I miss attendance? Roll call attendance, sorry.
Okay, Ms. DePalma?
Here.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Putney?
Here.
Mr. Stacy?
Here.
Ms. Torrello?
Here.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago? Okay. There is correspondence. Yeah. It's a one cheater right there.
Oh, with the email?
Yep.
Okay, yes. We got an email from Mr. Parker who cannot make it tonight. Just talking about scheduling of one of the BOE meetings that landed on Veterans Day. But I believe that's already been rectified? Yeah, there you go. There's correspondence. Okay. Standing committee reports? Jack?
Just quick, rumor has it, I haven't verified it totally, but boys' ice hockey is number one in Division II. They're ranked number one in Division II.
Very nice.
I think they have one loss and one tie, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And the other teams are doing well.
Okay, policy, I think we're still going good. Did a lot of work on the Title IX, which I saw now today. We're going to be reverting back to the 2020 policy. So that was a lot of good work, you know, put in. And then I just think there's a, they're upping something on the restorative practices that we gotta review.
Yep. And then. We're looking at some AI policy. We might have some drafts coming to the Board of Ed as well as some changes in technology policy and bring your own devices. And we are also taking a closer look at some language in the 504 policy. So we're continuing to work with Cave and Legal on some of those. And then when they're in draft form, we'll bring them to the board for your input, review, and edits. Okay?
Not yet. Okay. Superintendent Sir Clark?
I don't have anything this evening, but I'll turn it over to the assistant superintendents. I think they have a few things to share. Lisa?
So I wanted to share that the high school applied and so did the middle school for two grants, two separate grants through the School Based Health Alliance. The after-school program at the middle school, which was fully funded, and a fairly large project that's going to happen very quickly at the high school as an extension of the outdoor garden space, which I'm sure many of you have seen out in the back in this direction. We submitted a grant proposal to put a fully functioning greenhouse outside near the garden. It would be year-round with irrigation and heating. And it's fairly large. It was an $86,000 grant proposal that was fully funded. And it's private organization, so the money is not highly restricted. We'll be able to have access to it and begin work very, very quickly. So the kids are really excited, the teachers in the CTE department are very excited. The special education team is working with the transition and life skills students to have kind of a big role down there. And we're really excited to see where it goes.
Yeah, that's great.
Congratulations?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bring this to our CEO, Epo. Did you have anything?
So we have the staple reports that we provide. I gave both tonight since we weren't here in December. First being cafeteria report. You'll see we are starting to trend better. We have our monthly meeting with Sedexo for the month of December results next Tuesday. But based on some staffing changes and management support, that's why you're seeing a little bit of a loss on the earlier months. And that should be correcting itself. Not to say it this way, but all is well because we do have a $90,000 guarantee in our contract. So whatever staffing costs that they're doing to onboard downstairs, it is all guaranteed to us that it will not have an impact on our bottom line for the year. But this still is the performance. And the large driver for the expense being larger than normal is the additional staff that's on site to make that transition. Next report is health insurance. As we discussed in our budget presentation, you'll see the outcome of our expenses from July through December. Expenses so far have been $5 million for the first six months, which does fall in line with the projection of the $10 million that Lockton had provided us. So far, from a cash flow perspective, we are, we are okay right now. We did have one heavy month, you'll see in November. We get billed weekly for this. Every Monday, they withdraw money from the account. We had two weeks in a row in November, you'll see that 1.1 million. It was back-to-back $500,000 weeks. Normally, they're around 100 to 150,000, and they're getting back in that range. So we're hoping to see some regularity and extend what our allocated money is going to, how far it'll stretch for us this year. But that's the performance for those two areas. And then if there's any questions on POs or invoices, I can field those now as well.
Okay, RJ, I know you're working on the Deer Run water issue.
We did fix that.
Okay, so this is the last, this is the last large bill. What was it?
So Deer Run, many of the older elementary schools have steam boilers. And the steam pipes that run from the boiler room are underground. There's a little crawling space. One day, our heat was malfunctioning in one of the wings. So in checking the heat and tracing the lines back to the boilers, there was a steam leak in that area. So that was working from when we turned the boilers on, those last three, three months, we had the excessive water usage.
Perfect.
So this bill here is for the lag, so we should be good going, going forward.
Good. And Bob, I have a couple of questions. Relay Hub? What is Relay Hub?
Better kid. Sorry, Robert. Make sure I'm on. Sorry, Marion, let me start from the beginning. Relay is our third-party vendor who helps us manage our Medicaid funds.
Oh, okay. So they, they process the claims, is that what they're doing?
They help process the claims through Medicaid.
I think that's the first time I've seen that.
It was formally compu-claimed that the company has been rebranded.
Okay. And Cheshire Fitness Zone, is that, that's PT and OT?
PT and OT, I think that should be pretty minimal. Yeah. Might be one, we're not using a lot of Cheshire Fitness Zone folks right now.
Okay.
We also have a part-time PT posted for that reason. But we, since we can't fill it, we're outsourcing until we can hire.
Good, thank you.
Anything else? That's all I have, Michelle. Thank you.
Okay. So acceptance of meeting minutes for December 3rd. Did anybody have any questions or revisions for the meeting minutes? If not, it moves that we accept the minutes. Move to our audience of citizens portion. Is there anyone here who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online?
Not to my knowledge, but let me, if you don't mind, just give me a moment.
Sure.
Refresh the link.
Refresh the link.
I don't see anybody in there. All right. Let's move on to new business, shall we? 6.1, discussion and possible action on the approval of the East Haven High School out-of-state field trip to Richard Rogers Theater in New York, New York, on February 26th.
Yes. So, in your packet, there is some background information and detail on the trip along with a letter to some parents and guardians and the invoice for the blessing.
It's a great opportunity for the kids. My goodness. Wow.
Yeah. So awesome. It is one of the great field trips.
Is this the second year or third year they're going?
Third, I think.
Fourth already. Oh, my gosh.
Wow. That's great.
Still haven't gone four years.
Do they need a chaperone?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the East Haven High School out-of-state field trip to Richard Rogers Theater in New York, New York. On 2/26/25.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. So, at this time, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torrello?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Eight in favor, motion carries.
6.2, discussion and possible action on the approval for a contract extension for B&amp;B Transportation.
So, this is, we are in our fourth year of our contract. And per the contract, there is an opportunity to extend for three years after year five with negotiations starting in year four. But we need to write them, we needed to write them January 1st. So, because there wasn't a meeting in December, this is the first time we could bring it to you now. We need to just write to them asking, making a request of our intent to do so. So, we're here tonight asking for your intent.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
We make a motion that we approve the contract extension for B&amp;B Transportation.
Second. Okay. So, at this time, any questions?
To be clear, Michelle, we're not voting on the contract extension. It's just to negotiate, like to open negotiations. Okay?
Okay.
Do we have to put it to bid or anything, or we can just...
Nope.
I just have a comment.
Yep.
So, as a parent, they're excellent at answering the phone. And if there's an issue, I've never had a problem with them. They're really good. And Tess is in fifth grade, and she can get let off the bus, but they do not let her off the bus unless I'm there. But I've just had great experiences with them. I think they're great. I've heard a lot of things.
I agree. I really like them.
They've been great on our end as well. Like, the number of calls that we get of complaints and items that we need to handle is minimal. Like, there's months where we don't get anything. So, they're handling it on their end, or there is no issue to begin with. So, from our perspective as well, it's been a great experience.
Yeah, they call right back or answer right away.
Yeah.
And I got to say, I don't think there were any really issues for even the first day of school.
Nope.
Like, in the past. Yeah, I know. I was like, wow.
They're very accommodating and responsive. And, you know, customer service is like a 10. And also, their focus remains students, which is really important.
And they do. I see them waiting with students if they don't see the parent. And I've been behind them plenty of times. And I think, you know...
High-quality vendors.
And they notice when there's a lot of people behind them too. But they just do what they need to do. It's, they do look good, yeah.
And during all of those shortage areas, they maintained a full staff and ran the buses as needed. We didn't have to make any modifications or combined. If you remember, some other districts were really, really struggling during that time. Very, very high-end vendor.
Didn't they even come here for, like, touch a truck?
Yes.
And people got to see them.
They're very, they're very supportive of many of our, many things that we do, they are very supportive.
Yeah.
Nice. Okay.
Very good.
So, before we do a roll call vote, I just want to make sure that it's clear that this would be for approval for, to issue a letter of intent of a contract extension for B&amp;B Transportation.
Correct. Thank you.
So, yeah.
Roll call?
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torrello?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Eight in favor, motion carries.
Brings us to our last item of the evening, discussion, 6.3. Discussion and possible action on the removal of the playground at East Haven High School.
So, there is a playground below us next to the community garden that was built by our students. It was used years ago for the Little Jacket Program and the Busy Bees Program housed the high school. It is since, many of the slides are cracked. It's not usable. But as Lisa had mentioned, that will be the home of our future greenhouse. So, step one is getting the land prepped for installation. So, we would need to remove that playground so we can get the installers here to get the next ball rolling. So...
Great. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to remove the playground at East Haven High School.
One second.
Great. Any questions, comments? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Ms. DePalma?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Ms. Torrello?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Eight in favor, motion carries.
I just want to point out, future agenda items, our next meeting is the 28th, not the 23rd. This is a typo on the agenda. Other than that, I will be seeing everyone on the 21st next Tuesday.
What time, Michelle?
Six o'clock?
Six?
Yeah. Maybe I'll bake. I don't know. We'll see. Hi, Mike. Hi. Special treat. I don't know. Are you being, are you being serious? I like baking. I really like that, more importantly. So, I have to bake too. All right. We had a contest. My chocolate chip cookies blew themselves out of the water. Okay.
She's competing with her daughter.
Motion to adjourn?
Meeting adjourned.
So, January 21st.